Okay. You're on.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to our Select Board meeting tonight. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank everybody again for being here. On our first agenda under appointments, Ms. Bridgette Brigitte Rounds, Library Trustee for an alternate. That's going to be our task to vote for her tonight, one way or the other. And so, Bridgette, would you like to come up and introduce yourself, please?
This is what I think is nice. You get to see the person.
Yep.
If you speak into that when people walk out, they can see you. And the closed caption.
Okay. So, I'm Bridgette Brown. I've lived here for eight years in Barrington. And I actually saw on the newsletter, the email newsletter, that goes out, I think, monthly at the library, they needed more alternates. So, I jumped on that. I definitely think that the library is a place to help people come together. As a kid, it was one of my favorite things to go to the library and check out my own book and have my own library card. So, I have a two-year-old that I want to start doing with that and instill in him love for books and library. So, this is my chance. So, I'm really excited to be able to do that.
Thank you. Suzanne, the board members would like to ask any questions, starting with Mr. Nept.
I'm just really on the fence seeing Utica College on there. I don't know.
Did you go to Utica College?
No, I have a lot of friends that did. I know the area all too well.
It's a good place, I promise.
Mrs. Hent?
No, I think she fulfilled her desire very well.
Thank you.
We appreciate your participation.
Mr. Hart.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I thought you had a question.
Oh, thank you very much.
Are we going to vote in our non-public session? Chairperson Bailey?
I would think the logical question would be, is there anyone here who would like to request a non-public session for discussion?
There you go. Does anybody here want to go non-public for discussion?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you for your note. Dan, do you have anything? Well, I don't have anything either. Is anybody in the public? Thank you. Let's see. Do I get a...
I make a motion that we appoint Bridgette. She'll be second best library.
Apologies opposed, say nay. Apologies in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Feel guilty, please.
I swear.
Yeah, I bet I'm not going to use those words.
Thanks.
Here we go. I hope we can get there. I'm going to read the opening. When I say aye, please repeat your name and then everyone say aye.
Aye for your answer.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear in the firm... Please repeat after me doing it. Do solemnly and sincerely swear in the firm...
And sincerely swear in the firm.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a library trustee alternate.
Discharge upon me.
Okay. I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
...upon the duties incumbent upon me as a library trustee alternate...
Perform the duties incumbent upon me as a library trustee alternate.
...of Barrington, New Hampshire for one year.
Of Barrington, New Hampshire for one year.
According to the best of my abilities...
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations...
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
...of this constitution and the laws...
Of this constitution and laws.
...of the state of New Hampshire.
And of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This I do under the pain and penalty of perjury.
This I do under the pain and penalty of perjury.
Congratulations again. I really want to welcome you here and I'm glad that you volunteered. It's something that sets an example for other people to do because we are looking for a lot. Thank you very much. And you said it's a tremendous person. We really appreciate it.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome, Bridgette.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
You need to sign it. You need to sign it.
Yeah, well, you can cast your...
You need to sign this as well as for her hand as well as one of the people who...
Next, under appointments, we have the open sale of town property bids, which we are going to open now.
The first one is map 102 lot 74. And three bids were received.
Just because my brain doesn't contain all of the map and lot numbers, which is that...
Longshore.
Longshore? Yeah. If it did, I'd have real problems.
Well, that's to lose.
We have a certified check. We have a check from the credit union. And this is for an amount of, the bid is an amount of some $5,555.
And the name?
And the name is Victor Diggman.
And that was which lot?
Um, map 102 lot 74.
$5,550.
$5,550. 102 74. Correct. Mr. John, let John put them in and I'll take them out.
Yep, that was the one on longshore.
And here is another bid for lot 74. Excuse me, all I have is a check for $150. There's nothing in it.
10% would be $1,500.
There is no $1,500. Okay, this is for lot 74. So, it's $1,510.
And the name on it?
Nope. Northeast Credit Union.
No, there must be a name.
Town of Barrington.
Oh, Peter Frichette.
Peter Frichette, there it is on the bottom. Sorry about that.
So, we are making the assumption that that is for $1,500 since you put 10% down.
Yeah. Here's for lot 102, I mean, map 102 lot 74 again. This is the bid for $2,050 and it is from Ben Peters. And I have a check for $205.
Okay, so the next one is what, 102 75. And there are two bids.
This is for lot 102 75 in the amount of $12,100 from Mr. Ben Peters. The check is for $1,210. There's a bid for lot 75. Again, there's no paperwork. This is from Peter Frichette. And he is, the check is for $151. And I am assuming that that's for $1,510 for lot, I mean, map 102 lot 75.
What does it?
And the check's for $151.
The next one is on Young Road, map 115, lot 36-1. And there are two bids.
They're bid for 115...
Dash six.
Uh, let's see, this does not make sense. This says here...
What's the check for?
Check is for $1,110.
So, the bidding...
And the outside, the outside, it says bid map 115 lot 36.
Yeah. So, that must be $1,100. Let me look through that letter.
Stand corrected. It's 6.7 acres and that's what it's for. The information's on the back.
So, that's 6.7 acres.
No. Point five...
Point six seven.
Yeah, okay. I was gonna say, that's a big difference. We didn't put anything up that big.
Didn't I say point six seven?
Oh, I thought you said 6.7.
Stand corrected. Thank you.
Just so everybody in the audience is clear, it's not a lot.
Another one for, from Peter Frichette for $151. And is it, the outside of the envelope says lot 36.
What was it? Thousand?
It's probably $1,510. Yeah. Exactly.
I don't see where he, I don't see where the prior one put the price down. So, again, that's an assumption based on the bid.
Back side of the paper.
Here's the phone number where the property is and their address.
On the outside of the envelope.
No, you shouldn't have the bid on the outside. We just make the assumption based on the check. I'm sorry, what was the one you just read on?
The one, here's the one here, it's Peter Frichette, lot 36 for $151, which I assume is $1,510 for the bid.
Okay, the next one is map 224 lot 60.
And this is Castle Rock?
It's one lot of Castle Rock, yeah.
Next time when we do these, Suzanne, we ought to put right on here the amount you're bidding.
I've never seen it.
I feel like they were pretty clear, but...
Usually they don't even see it.
Because the place would have it write it down, just saying you could add that to... Yeah. And not criticize, you know, just saying going forward, trying to make it clear. So, what's the check for on that one? It's on the bottom. So, $444.
$444.
For a foyer.
Yep. And this kit comes from DE Air Industrial Service and Supply Company.
And that was on lot...
Um, map 224 lot 60.
460.
Okay. Store at the top of the hill, right? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, now, the other one, the last, is the combination of lots, which is map 224, 56, 70, 63, 64, and 65. And there are two bids.
Check is for... Looks like $888.
Yeah, $8,888.
Yep. So, it's, and the bid is $8,888 and the check is for $888.86. And again, that's from DE Air, that's from the combination.
The three bids. Whoops, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let me finish this. I've got an extra, I've got another bid on lot 60.
Okay.
So, this is, this is the multiple lots.
Which one of the lots first?
You can all level the lots.
This is, this is still under multiple lots. I have a check for $151 from Peter Frichette. This is for the combination.
So, $1,510. If I were a bet man, I think I know what this last one's gonna be.
So, okay, now, going back to map 224 lot 60 for a second bid.
Now, on three lots, he's doing the same thing.
Bid for lot 60 on the outside of the envelope. Make bet. I'll bet you. This is from Peter Frichette for $151. An assumption that it has 10%, it's $1,510 for lot 60. John?
Oh, okay. That's it?
Thank you so much.
How does the board want to proceed from here? Do you want to develop a purchase and sales agreement on each of these with the high bid?
I think that we should just, just look at taking the high bid and going that way. Does anybody else have any other comments, please?
Can we quickly know what the assessed value of each of these properties are?
Yes.
We have both comments.
Yeah. Okay. Lot 102 74, the assessed value is $12,200.
102 75 or...
$12,200.
Right. 102 75 or...
74, lot 74.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking farther down.
Lot, lot 102 75 is, uh, it has, it has a mobile home on it. $79,500.
Wow.
Uh, the one on Young Road, map 115, lot 36, lot 1, $59,800. 224 lot 60 at the end of Castle Rock Road. And I've got a combination of lots, the combination...
What was 74, 150, and 102? 74, 150. Did you have that one?
74.
74, 150. Where are you getting that number from?
102 74? 102 74.
I thought Peter Frichette bid $1,500 on 74.
Oh, I'm doing the assessed value.
224 60. No, but I thought he did also on 74, 150. There was no 150. Lot 74.
Yeah, 1,150.
Which has an assessed value of $12,200, so that's, that's what we're requiring. So, maybe just a close approximation of the combined lots.
Well, let's see. Lot 70 is $4,600. Lot 63, 64, 65 is $77,100. And lot 56... Got to get that though. Let's see. Uh, $4,800.
Now that we've had the values, does anybody want to reject any of the bids?
That's why I'm, I'm just asking for comment. How to comment? I believe.
Is this standard procedure from the board, Ben, to accept the bids?
It usually is unless there's a unique circumstance, yes.
So, we've never gone back and placed them on...
Oh, we...
...on the sale?
Yeah, we have rejected all the bids and started over again or done something different.
I don't think we've ever listed with any real estate agent that's done it that way.
Or auction is the more common way. Most towns will put together 10, eight or 10 parcels and then have an auctioneer come in and do it. And that does often return a higher return. I think the trailer that is on the 102 75 is probably not worth a whole lot in reality, even though we've got it assessed there. But I would say that the Castle Rock parcels need to have a purchase and sales contract written that includes the road improvements as part of the purchase and sales. That's what I...
And that was our discussion.
That was our discussion was for that.
Right. Whereas the 102, whereas the longshore road ones, and the, whereas the 102, map 102 and map 115, I would assume we could just take the, the high bid for those three. Because we didn't have conditions on, on any of those. Is that a fair assess, a fair assessment of the regular one's recollection on the bids?
Mm-hmm.
So, if we had a motion for the 102 75, 102 74, and 115 36-1 to the high bid, then we could proceed. And the high bid would be Ben Peters on lot 70, 102 75, Victor Diggman on 102 74, and Bert and Marilyn Allen on 115 36-1. I'll make a motion to accept the bids submitted on lots 102 74, lot 102 75, and lot 115 36-1.
I have a motion?
The high bid. The high bid, not just the bids.
Do I have a second, please?
I'll second it. It gets them back on the tax roll.
All right, we'll have a vote, please. Be noted that Mr. Selectman Heer has stepped down, so it'll be the four of us.
Any public comment?
I don't think there's any public comment necessary.
I have no problem with the additions that were done on that, right with the town roads.
So, on those first three lots, I'll vote aye. Aye.
Aye. Bailey, aye. 4-0.
Yes. Okay, now, my recommendation is that you ask the town administrator in conjunction with the town attorney to draw up a purchase and sales for Peter Frichette for 224 60 and DE Air for the combined group of lots. Bring it back to the board for June 4th.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Do a second discussion, please. No objection?
Hardikoff aye. Hatchet.
Sorry, go ahead. I'll comment after. It's not a, not a comment. Napa.
Bailey, aye. And make note, please, that Mr. Heer, it's a 4-0 vote. Mr. Heer has stayed.
So, who moved and seconded that?
George moved.
I moved it.
I seconded. And just my note on it is, please make sure Mr. Frichette fully understands the conditions associated with purchasing that property.
Yep.
What's that?
And we will return the checks to the unsuccessful bidder once the sale has gone through for the successful bidder.
Any, any more questions from the board, please?
No, I'd like to definitely going forward, explore that auction possibility. What we found historically is it returns more money to the town. It would certainly be, it's an appropriate possibility.
I would actually even make the motion, make the recommendation to look at possibly even using a Realtor for it because I feel like getting it on the MLS, you get a lot more attention to it.
The, the difficulty with the Realtor is setting the price. Whereas an auction, you get usually, the, the one who does most of the auctions in this area for properties advertises, puts it out so that it's well-known and gets a, you know, a commission. Yeah, they get a commission, but they...
Well, that was something, I know, we had talked about when I first came on the board. You said you weren't seeing, by the time you paid the fees, you weren't getting anything more than...
I think the market is likely...
It's going up.
Yeah. So, I would say if, if this, I, I would like to see us try that going forward. It's not for discussion right now, but certainly should this arise again, I'd like to see us try that.
Comes up a few, we'll cover both aspects and see which is best for the town.
Right. We have some, we have a couple of really good lots that we're waiting on until we fix the culvert on a particular road and a couple of others. When those are available, they should bring, you know, $30,000 or some number like that because other than the title, they're, they're good lots to build on, they're sizable. We have a couple of others. So, what we should do is if we're gonna bring an auctioneer in, do it when we have a number of good lots to put together. All of these have significant limitations, I guess, having some...
Anything else?
No.
Hey, I'd like to close the portion for bids and move on to public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes. And, so, anybody that would like to speak publicly?
There we go. Closing that aspect of it. Next is staff reports. Uh, minutes.
I'm sorry, minutes. We have three minutes to select, to vote on tonight. First of all, first minute is April 23rd.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. Comment? No comment, have a vote, please. Bailey, aye.
Napa.
Hatchet aye.
Hardikoff aye.
Heer aye.
It's for 23rd. The next minutes we have to approve is for the all-boards meeting on Monday, April 30th. Do we have any comments? Corrections or omissions?
I think we've corrected it.
Corrections.
I think it's important to note that select person, Nap, was correct in what his vote had been.
Correct. Then you voted nay and it wasn't...
We had voted nay and it was not reported that way. So, thank you for bringing that up before it was approved.
I have a motion, please?
A motion to accept for April 30th.
Do I have a motion? I have a second.
Heer aye.
Hardikoff aye. Hatchet aye.
Bailey, aye. With the minutes approved for April 30th. Next one is for Selectman's Minutes on May 14th.
You did have two notes.
2018. Have comments, please?
Yep. Um, right after Senator Waters having hours, Selectman Nap made a suggestion to John to reach out to Senator Waters about expressing the concern about people who have to work, being able to attend. And if I may, it's not exactly with the minutes, but Senator Waters is scheduled to come to the Selectman's Meeting on June 3rd. So, anyone who's interested in being here and commenting to him, he will make himself available in the evening and he is planning to be here at the Selectman's Meeting. ECLC 77 Ramsdale, Monday night, June 3rd, 6:30.
I just, it wasn't in the minutes, so I wanted to comment on that. And then the second item was, um, under the cemetery trustees, this is, it's Hardeko with earlier suggestion or something to that effect. And I made a note that Ms. Hardeko was agreeing with a comment that I had made about having an implementation plan with dates. And her statement was, I concur that we should be looking at doing that.
And I, that's it.
Okay, was it? All right.
Thank you.
I made one comment on page two.
Yeah, and that's correct.
Okay, thank you. It's a lot separated. And there was under the appointments, Mr. Wallace was asked about the status of the dam. And I want to know who was supposed to gather that information. It seems to be omitting. We seem to have said Mr. Wallace was gonna do it, then we said that Ms. Pam Failing was going to do it. So, so that's next week.
I, I believe it's Pam Failing is suing the, as an engineer is looking at it from that standpoint. So, if John was gonna check with Pam and see where it was at.
Yeah, and one of the other questions is that was brought, I'm sorry.
Dan, I think for conservation has a comment.
Uh, yes. I brought it, they don't...
I'm finished going on, so go ahead, Dan.
On that subject you just mentioned, I, at Thursday meeting, I mentioned it to John Wallace because there was, a question was asked and Pam was not at the meeting, but his answer was, we had a extension on it, there's no hurry on it. We had extension on the, the state front time period.
So, that was John. You're asked, you want to add that to the minutes at that point, you're saying.
I did, it wasn't part of our meeting.
You're saying at a different meeting.
No, I asked, it... No, I asked, the question was asked, I brought to Renzabi.
No, you're saying at a different, he's saying at a different meeting.
Conservation meeting.
Conservation meeting.
This is just a minute.
This is just for the minutes, Dan.
All right.
I thought he wanted to amend the...
You're right.
And then when we talked about 68 group, on how to request for donations and how they would be sent, I think that was one of the questions.
And I added that it was going to stay locally.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
And then on page five, when we had the, under the amended board goals, it was my understanding, and please correct me, that we said there was going to be Route 125, there was going to be 125 Hard Rock Commercial Park instead of Industrial Park.
Chair Bailey, I think that was part of the discussion, but I do believe that after a round of discussions, we decided to truncate that entire line to end at the period and remove any other descriptions to stop the confusion that was happening.
And Asha mentioned that.
In a variety of areas.
Okay, so we're going to stop. All right, thank you very much.
And we ended it before Ramsdale, so we didn't give any illustrations. We just said development, industrial park without...
And that was referenced in the public comment section because Paul Mustafa talked about it, and then we had a whole comeback about, come around that section.
There was a step on it, I asked. All right, so any other comments for the May 14th minutes?
We're making, make a motion to approve as amended.
I'll second it.
Bailey, aye?
Heer, aye.
Hatchet.
Hartz IV.
And Mr. Heer voted also with positive. Thank you for closing that. Moving on to staff reports, administrative scrutiny, do you have anything?
Only what's going to come up on the paving later.
Thank you. And Suzanne, you, clerk, you only have signatures necessary or do you have some?
I have two intent-to-cut forms to design. One land use change tax, six gravel tax warrants, vendor manifested May 16th, payroll manifested May 13th. And chairperson Bailey asked me to get the abutters for Swain Road Class 6 Section and Marsh Road. And I had handed them out. And the Marsh Road one, the ones that are highlighted in red are on the, on the portion of the Class 6 Section that is maintained by the residents. And that, those are completely separate.
Not on the 202.
Not on the 202, yeah. And the Swain Road Class 6 Section are the ones that I starred in blue asterisks.
Also, also coming with that is going to be maps for both roads, so you'll have those together. So when we have our discussions later on, you'll have the files, you'll have material in front of you, so if you want to go that way. It was just a request I made this morning, and that's why it isn't all here, but we have some of it, so it will help us out. Any comments? Thank you very much, Suzanne. Next we have is the whole business. Under whole business, we have the paving recommendation. We have a letter from Peter dated the 21st. Says following five bids were received for 2018. Pike Industries, $652,883. Advance it excavation and paving, $628,698.30. R&amp;D paving, $603,975.20. Paroxi Industries, $603,913.22. GMI Asphalt for $593,752.20. And Peter writes, after reviewing the bids, my recommendations to accept the bids from R&amp;D paving for the following reasons. We have a good working relationship. We are familiar with the town and the roads. They have done the town's paving work for four out of the five last years with no problems or concerns. They have completed the job in a timely manner. They are very professional and easy to deal with. They were the only company who actually came out to view and measure the roads. These are the reasons that I support hiring R&amp;D for the town's 2018 paving project. With that being said, we also have a note from John Scruton, John, the town administrator, notes that he disagrees with Peter's recommendation, and he believes that the bid should go to GMI. With that being said, I'm not going to read the whole two pages of everything we have here. I'm going to open up for some, for questions and answers from the board, please. Who has, who has any questions concerning this bid payment? Dan?
The bids went out late, we had good prices, and I think we should go with GMI. They did the highway to garage, the rental company and stuff. And $10,000, $10,000.
$10,225.18.
Very good, very good.
Yeah, for the, for the public, GMI was the low bid. Buy $10,000.
Yes. Ms. Hardecoff?
In this particular instance, well, I always feel we should defer to department managers. I also feel like we were very lucky to get six responses based on, five responses, my apologies, based on what other cities and towns have received. And I do think in order to, you know, ethically approach the bid process, that we should take the low bid for the work.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else have comments, please?
Well, the only thing I'll say is if you don't take, if that's not the way you operate, you're not going to have to keep bidding.
I concur with all of the statements made before.
So do I. So we have Peter Cook's recommendations. We have the recommendation from John Scruton. We have five of us here. Do I have a motion to follow through with that, the bid that we would like to add?
Yeah, I make the motion to accept the low bid on the five bids that were received and accept the proposal from GMI Asphalt.
I'll second.
I'd like to annotate that for $593,752.20.
And I'll second that.
We have a second? Bailey, aye? Dan, aye, go ahead.
Heer, aye.
Hartz IV.
Hatchet.
Nap, aye.
Bailey, aye. So John, if you would turn around and take care of the rest of paperwork and make sure that goes to GMI Asphalt, please. For the, for the board members, I, as I said to you, I met with John earlier this morning, and part of the reason for meeting with John was to get the necessary paperwork for each of us to have it so we can turn around and put together his evaluation as, as we have in here, performance appraisal, as it should be called, excuse me. We also have his job description, and we also have the paperwork necessary. So I would ask that everybody take it. And John, what's the date of our next meeting?
June 3rd.
June 3rd, is that going to give everybody ample time?
Excuse me, June 4th.
June 4th, all right. Is that going to give everybody on the board ample time? If not, I can increase that. What is your pleasure on that?
No, I'm perfectly fine with that. In the past, with performance appraisals, and if approved by the board, you don't necessarily mark them up with your name as you submit them. You do a fair and honest evaluation and don't necessarily indicate your name, submit them in a sealed envelope, and give them to SUIs.
So is that what the board wants to do?
I was just, would like to share, the last one we did, what we did is we had a non-public where we discussed it, and we put everyone's evaluation down, and I just listed them as Selectman 1 through 5 at random, so there was no, no name tied to it. And then what we did is based on that, we did a review, we did a combined calculated score, and I can share that with you, I have that from how it was done the last time. It was just a very easy way to, for everyone to rank it, and then everyone's feedback and evaluation carried toward that, toward a legit decision and what we all agreed to at the end.
I think, I think both examples are very good, and I appreciate that.
Since it is a, it was a combined board assessment.
Mm-hmm. I'm surprised there was a need for discussion, I guess, is what's surprising me. Typically, it's a review, you provide the information, the chairperson takes the, or you know, anyway, I'm surprised that there was discussion about it.
What we found is everybody has their own kind of perception as to how somebody would rank in there, and then once we had discussion around that, that could, yeah, it helps clear up.
Please understand that we would be doing the discussion in non-public.
Okay, that's fine.
Does anybody else have any comments? All right, so we're going to go with June 4th. We'll have a non-public session at the close of the meeting to discuss that. New business. Under new business, I want to thank...
Sorry, just wanted to...
So I'm sorry.
Would you mind sending the electronic version? Because I know I like to make...
You like electronic, Andy, it's fine.
I do, and I'm very thorough about how I write it up, and that way all my comments fit right into it.
I'll send it all to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want electronic of the job description too, or just the evaluation?
No, just the evaluation, sorry.
I actually think you have the job description on the thumb drive.
And I pretty, I probably have the evaluation from years past, I just don't know if anything's changed.
It's easier, no, it hasn't changed. It's just easier for me to email it.
The only, the only thing that I would bring...
I just do a search in my files and it pops up.
Yeah, select board was the point change for board, select, select board, the impact was changed. Do we have any further comments under whole business?
I thought we were on new.
No, I saw your hand go up, so I assumed that I went too fast out of whole business, so I was, that's why I went back to whole business to ask you a comment under whole business.
Yes, I'd like to comment on paving as a select person, while we have the road agent here and the board. Are you, I am, would you say on paving?
Please.
I have a lot of public comments. The general, the maintenance paving line, the sales money remaining in that line item. And I think the road agent should list roads from the past that need to wear course done. We have good price, price is not going to get cheaper next year, we have oil's going up. And I think, we say, there's like $144,000 left over, roughly. So if we take $100,000, there's like $1,500 additional ton. We could lay down roads on, for wear course. And then it allows him to have some money still in his budget in case we have, goes over or anything. So we're not draining that line either.
Comments from the board? Mr. Heer, stick comments?
I actually don't think it's a bad idea.
No, I don't either. So do you, why don't we have the town administrator get with Peter, get a listing of some of those roads together, and then when we, we have a definite, we know what, we know what we bid, but there might be any extras or anything along the way we might have to consider. We'll have to wait to see what Peter brings back to John, John brings to us, and we can go from that. Andy, do you have a comment?
Actually, yeah, it kind of, I don't know, it blends in a little bit with old business and new business, and it's regarding, based on the reviews that had, that actually John had gathered, there was an interesting piece in there where there were some folks who had bid a multi-year contract.
Yes.
And, and that may actually not be a bad idea, knowing the direction that oil is going. You might be able to lock that in for a couple of years at a really low rate and protect the town or insulate the town a little bit, just looking at...
That's a good, good idea.
Well, I would suggest that after we've had some experience where we're going to a new firm, if we're satisfied with their performance, we consider locking it in later in the fall. I agree with you there. I will also ask Peter to come up with a list of contingent additional roads that could be added. I mean, there's prepping and a lot of other things that go into it, so there's only so much that he can get ready. But I will see what we can do. I fully agree that with this price, we ought to probably spend the $130,000 to $40,000 that we're likely to have, leaving a cushion, of course, in case any of the current roads run over.
Yep. All right, Dan?
I believe in most paving contracts, at the end, the state regulates the oil. It could go up or down and stuff. So the only thing we're going to gain is we're going to lock in on labor. If asphalt goes up, pavement's going up. We're not going to get the same price.
Thank you. Ms. Hardecoff?
I was just simply going to note what our town administrator already made note of, which is we haven't had experience with this limited liability corporation yet, and that we probably, before locking ourselves into anything, see what the outcome is and let Peter evaluate how he feels the work is going to be doing.
Any further comments on the bid?
I just wanted to make, make sure, I'm not looking to say we lock in necessarily with this one company, but we put it back out right after we're done paving and then see if it's worth locking it in for next year, if this, at a low rate this year, we can pull it off.
Dan?
That may be kind of hard to do because there's some reconstruction projects coming up and is up, so the price could vary.
I appreciate, I know that prices can vary, but...
No, on the job, according to the jobs.
And we're going to have to see where we're at at the end, exactly we have left and where we go from there, and then we're going to have to review how Peter and John works with everybody with GMI. Thank you for your comments. Moving on, I sent out to everybody, John did for me, I should say, the procedures for the select board. If you'll notice that the new ones he sent out are different than the ones we have on the foot, on the thumb drive, so they're all up to date and the verbiage has been changed on them. Just want to make that note. Now, also under new business, Ms. Hardecoff has a presentation she would like to make.
I'm aware that closed caption doesn't work unless I talk into this, and I'm all for universal design and access for people living with disabilities. So those of us that may be deaf or hard of hearing can actually follow the meeting. I thank you all for letting me review all of the closed meeting minutes notes from non-public session. I did review all of the material that you all had access to in reference to discussions surrounding an assistant town administrator at some point. I know that we, I parted ways with the agreement of going with the MMA NH choice for a student at a master's level to be brought in for an internship. So at this time, after reviewing all of the information that we had, I'd like to make the recommendation that the select board proceed with a postgraduate fellowship. My, my choice would be for two individuals who have completed all of their coursework in either a master's in public administration or public policy. I think their exposure to a number of, you know, SPSS and GIS software programs for data mining certainly provide these particular graduates with the ability to take in a lot of information, very quickly disseminate and analyze it. So I did take the time and would like you all, if you were willing to, to review postgraduate public administration intern slash for town government job description. If you're willing to take it home and review the essential position functions and the job summary, the position requirements and the skills and knowledge required. I did mine some of it from the town administrator's job description. I mined some of it from other current posted postgraduate fellowships that I found. I think that we could essentially both help John to complete a number of tasks, hopefully at the same time preparing someone to handle preparation of a 2018, 2019 annual budget. But I would like to consider this as an option that allows us to do some on-the-job training and at the same time provide us with exposure to... and at the same time, provide us with exposure to a couple of graduate students over the course of maybe September through April.
Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Houtkrock, please? Dan? I'm sorry. Andy, that's my fault.
So, assuming at this point you're just asking us to review it, we haven't looked at a wage or anything, a target number, any of that information?
So, you know, based on my background, I did go out and look at rates of, can we pass one of these down to John's group, please? I did look at rates that I found online and quickly came up with a rate per hour. I had done an original estimation when we were approaching MMA NH, and I think what I'm proposing is both appropriate, and I always look at it this way, you could be paying a headhunting group thirty-three percent of a salary to find yourself a qualified candidate, but based on the information that I had read through, looking at prior applications, I, I really feel that this is an appropriate way for the town to both train someone on the job and then have choice in who they may consider hiring for next year.
Cover, please.
I was just gonna say, I don't think it hurts to review anything, I'd obviously wanna read it before I committed anything.
I would like to, we're putting an awful lot on June 4th, but is that gonna give everybody a chance to review the other items and this here together?
You've got a very full agenda on June 4th.
That's what I mean, yeah.
This discussion, if we're starting them in the fall, probably we'd wait until the second meeting in June.
Is that acceptable, everybody?
Yep.
All right, so that would be the twenty, twenty-eighth. No, eighteenth.
No, that's twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, see, I do, that's what I was gonna say, it was twenty-fifth.
Say, it wasn't twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth or twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say.
Is there anything else want to be covered on the new business? Seeing none on closed new business portion of it, and we'll go with the select person's report, Mr. Air?
I attended the conservation Thursday, and I did mention that about the dam to John Wallace, and he's not mentioned to Pam.
Thank you, Ms. Houtkrock?
I'm actually missing the recreation department commission's meeting right now, so if we do end early, I'll be heading over there.
That's because we changed our regular schedule.
We changed, yeah, that's...
We changed our schedule.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
It was necessary.
Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, we've had a zoning board meeting last Wednesday, and granted a very small side setback variance, two-point-four feet, I think it was. Okay, just as he said.
I bet that wasn't on a forty-eight capacity.
I think I'd have looked, I'd have slighted just a little to not pay that expense, but they were granted it, and they did a thorough job on that small, very good.
I'd just like to know, how do I get one of these sweepboard gigs that doesn't, like, meet all that often? Because I always end up with a school board, the planning board, anyway.
Always reward those that do well.
That's right. No good deed goes unpunished. So, on June 5th, the planning board will be looking at, there are two items on here right now, there's a lot subdivision for the James W. Haley property on Hall Road, and there is a site plan review scheduled for the 125 Pierce Road property with Joneson Beach Engineering. Also, there was a request to extend to June 5th for the Michael H. and Lisa H. McMahon, which is the requested twenty-two unit townhouse subdivision that is kinda kitty-corner across from the fire department and runs up to Oak Hill Road.
What was the date, where did they move that to?
They, they requested a continuance until June 5th.
Oh, that's, okay.
Yeah, next week. Also, or, I'm sorry, two weeks.
Next meeting.
Also, we obviously reviewed and approved minutes, and we reviewed the economic development plan, which was unanimously approved. With the economic development plan, there were two items that we went through, we talked about the highlighted areas or projects that are being worked on, the Pierce Road went from being proposed to ongoing now, since it is, the submittal has in, the initial permit is being submitted, and we talked about Redemption Road and taking out the word minimal work would be needed to just say most infrastructure already installed, so there was an amendment there, along with a note that extensive site work would be needed for further development. We reviewed the, there were no changes made to the town center improvements line item, and the Swings Lake, Swing Lake area recreation and alternative transportation improvement were unchanged on that. One item that did come up that the planning board has asked for and asked, has charged the select board with is approval to look at having an economic development committee, since it is such an integral part of town planning, so they asked to see if we would be willing to put out a request or start an economic development committee to work with the planning board and focused around the town's master plan.
Did they make any other recommendations as to, or had they brought anything else into it?
They did not. It was just starting the initial conversation about would it, would it make sense for us to look at doing something like that? Sorry, I keep leaning back so everyone can see, but I'm messing up the closed captioning.
I know.
That's what happened.
We need to clip on microphones.
Yeah, well, John was first.
Yeah, there's, I'll have to go second.
John, please.
I think the question would be, is it a subcommittee of the planning board, in which case probably the planning board should appoint it, and I thought they did under the visioning section some while ago, or if it should be under the board of selectmen, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, but I would think whichever board appoints it would be the board to which it reported.
Yep.
So, perhaps a discussion either with the planning board or among the selectmen is how you would like to proceed with appointing the committee as far as its reporting structure.
So, my recommendation on that would be that since the select board is supposed to be guiding the direction of the town, I would make the motion that it comes back to the select board, but with the requirement that Marcia and maybe somebody from the planning board, if possible, are very active in helping chair and guide it, to make sure that it aligns with all the rules and the regulations and requirements of our town.
Are you volunteering, Andy?
No.
This town is very rich, with knowledgeable people and stuff, and if you get out there, you wouldn't believe the rich, the knowledgeable people in this town.
You're talking about talent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Rich, and stuff, that's what I'm saying, if someone needs to take the time and go out there and ask people, they worked all pretty good on the town lands committee.
And the technology committee.
Right, I do.
Tracy, please, John, I'm sorry.
Actually, John, this is a question for you, I'm quite certain you've had experience with economic development committees, could you give us some guidance on how they were structured?
I've seen them structured both ways, and in general, they haven't been real successful. I think that the driving factor in economic development is usually the private sector, and the, most towns have worked at trying to be friendly to allow business to come in, and that is the most that you can do, it's hard to go out and drag them in, and we aren't, some states municipalities put up significant money. When I was in Rochester, we, well, they finished it after I had left, but they put up several million in infrastructure in order to get Severn, but they had, they had a particular plant lined up, they bought the land, and they, but they did it with the knowledge that they had some, they had something in the pipeline.
And there were grants involved in that process as well?
Right.
Not mistaken?
Yeah, but the, especially the state buying into training was a big piece of it.
Right.
And there were some other things, but again, it was, the town was approached by an existing business that wanted to do a major joint expansion with the French company, and that one was quite successful, but the city put up about five million dollars in a TIF that they get the money back from over the years from the taxation on the, on the property.
If I remember correctly, the big thing was the kind of renovation or relocation around the train bridge?
We had to put a bridge there, that wasn't, there was a railroad, ground, ground-level railroad crossing, and they refused to go without a bridge, and the bridge was a big expense.
Yeah.
Now, in, in general, unless you get the private sector involved, or as Rochester had two, had a full-time and a part-time economic development person plus a secretary, and they're going out and beating the drum for it, and, and, you know, meeting with the companies and spending time seeing what can be developed, the committee is relatively limited, and that goes back, I think when Dan raised his hand, he was gonna bring up, we already have a lands committee, we could, some of what they're doing relates to economic development. I, I'm not opposed to an economic development committee, but I think sometimes they end up being a feel-good endeavor.
We've actually had two, if not three, over the course of, of years.
I would think that our local chamber of commerce, too, has already tasked themselves with providing an appropriate level of information to new businesses that might be considering Barrington as a place to locate.
See, it's a greater Barrington, so there's a lot of communities, a lot of businesses on, even in Barrington that involve too, so.
Okay.
One of the comments out of it was Steve Diamond had attended multiple planning sessions at some of the, the regional meetings about economic development, and they looked at some of the different models that other towns were using, where Bristol had focused on the downtown area, and they put a little bit of money into kinda gussying it up and making it look nice, and that brought a pretty significant interest back into their downtown area, and then there was some talk up in, I'm sorry, what's the, the lake? The deepest, nicest lake, like cleanest lake?
No.
No.
Oldness in, in the...
No, it's going up ninety-three and it's off to the left.
Oh, San Antonio.
No, not San Diego.
Newport.
You're too, you're, keep coming over toward Plymouth. I can't think of the name of it for the last name.
I think it came by.
It's a, okay, we get the... Anyway, yeah, but they, I mean, they talked about how they, they worked around the lake and creating a rail, a bike trail on that, and opening up significant property around there. It was interesting to see the different towns' approaches, and then how they did it, so just having somebody that can be engaged in that level and then provide feedback is nice if you can get it. Now I'm gonna lose my mind over this.
Stick with economic development, I think that...
But that's what it was targeted around.
Yeah, I know, but what I'm saying is that I think that with doing this, I would suggest that the planning board be the one to set this up and to monitor, that's my thoughts on this, and I don't mean to overcome anybody else's, that's my nickel in the pot.
I would like to see before any decisions made, if perhaps the planning board could survey, like, rural communities that do not have the water and sewer infrastructures, and come back and report to us submission statements of maybe three of those communities, should they actually have economic development committees? And let's, you know, I never believe in reinventing the wheel, so I think if we looked into that, it would give us an idea of, you know, what's being done in those more rural communities that do not have the water and sewer infrastructure, which we know tends to be the barrier to our economic development, so that's my suggestion.
It was Newfound Lake is the one I could not think of. Newfound, and that, and, and I know Mr. Diamond has some of that information.
That would be great to see.
Any further comments?
And it's, sorry, yes, it's also, that is in the planning and economic development chapter about, and there is a reference to towns that do not have sewer systems and what has been done elsewhere, if you would like to see that here.
I've read that.
Okay, so there is a reference to that and what other communities.
Put it out there so the public understands what our barriers sometimes are.
Yeah, one success in Barrington was, before I arrived here, was using federal money for job training and hiring low to moderate income that TurboCam took advantage of in their early stages, and that helped to grow TurboCam and get it here, and there are grants out there if you've got the right private partner to work with.
We are still doing that pretty significantly as an organization, and we have a training center that is actually at our Rochester location, where we do a significant amount of training.
But, but I'm not sure you're still, you're probably not getting the federal money anymore.
We've never taken any federal money, as far as I understand it, we've never...
I thought you got some, some C-Mac grant back in the, CDVG money, early on.
Came through the town.
Okay.
Early on.
As far as I know, there was...
A long time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, since, I know since Safran had moved in, we had not received any money, but we have grown significantly faster than most other organizations in around the area.
Quite successful, that was like stat money, and sometimes stat money will get something going.
So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna turn around and have John take everybody's information requests, especially Tracy's, and we'll send that on to the planning board, have them get back to us with that information on how we're gonna do with the other towns, and also if you get a chance, either electronically send me that report, would you?
I don't have it electronically, but I will get it for you.
I appreciate that, makes it easier, and I know how easy it is now. Do we have any other comments?
Chair Bailey, I forgot to mention that tomorrow and the next day are the focus groups for the rec department, so any town residents, especially those of us that are sitting on various committees, the rec department would appreciate, there's still time to sign up till midnight tonight, you can select a one-hour slot where you're providing feedback for the rec department on their future growth and their envisionment for recreational programs here in the town.
And would you like to just let everybody know where the focus groups are being held?
I think they're being held right at the rec.
No, they're, they're being held at the town hall, last I know.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, behind the tax office.
Okay.
No?
No, they told, they told me on the phone, stay at town hall, I mean, at the town...
At the rec center.
Rec center. Because they're watching some children for people to be able to do it.
Oh. I was, two o'clock is...
Two o'clock.
Mine's two o'clock tomorrow, and mine's in the town hall.
I've got one at the town hall scheduled.
One-thirty, two-thirty tomorrow, and they told me the town gym.
Okay, so we should all double check? We're making some home calls or going on the website?
I know, unfortunately, I sent Tara, no, I will not be able to be present tomorrow.
I, I, probably depending upon the audience, she has a different location.
Mr. Dan, you have anything else?
I think I've, you've stolen enough of everyone's time.
That's all we have is time. Moving on, one, under my comments, I have a comment that came from the governor on the flags be flown at half-mast until sunset on May 22nd for the victims of Santa Fe, Texas, that was one of the notes that came out, and the other one was a reminder, which John already talked about, Senator David Waters will be here at 6:30 PM on June 4th for a public meeting, for those who are interested, please come by and appreciate it. That's all I have for comments. We have pub, public comment now, does anybody have any public comments? Seeing none? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make the motion.
Have a motion, you want a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Have a motion to second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming, everyone, appreciate it.